We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of the WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. And please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And I would like to call to order the work study session of the Maricopa County Community College Governing Board for March 19. I am going to do a roll call, even though I think we can all see who's here. But let me start with Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
I'm here as well. Mr. Burnett, are you? Is he online, you know? Okay, he's had a family health emergency, so I don't expect him this evening. With that, we'd like to move into our one item for our work session, which is the overview of this year's 2425 Maricopa County Community Proposed College Budget. Dr. Gonzalez, do you want to introduce the presenters and say anything you'd like to do to start off the session?
Yes, thank you, President Bitter Smith, members of the governing board. The work session, the budget overview at this point in time and where we're headed towards the next fiscal year. So I would like Kim Grunio to come up. She's the Vice Chancellor of Business Services to provide our latest update on our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grunio.
Okay, that's working. Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC, colleagues and guests. I am Kim Grunio and I serve as the Vice Chancellor for Business Services. And thank you for not asking me if I had a song, Ms. Bitter Smith, because I didn't get my monthly ping to remember to get one, so I didn't.
It's a new regime.
Oh, no French either. That's, we're not in danger of me speaking any other language besides English, so we're good there. So. But thank you so much for giving me some time today to do what should be the final presentation for the fiscal year 25 budget cycle. And this largely builds on what we started at January session. So if we go to the next slide, the agenda will show that we're going to look at budget summary updates by fund. We'll take a quick look at the general fund. We have a little bit of new information to share there, but not significant. You might remember that in January, we spent the bulk of our time on the general fund. And then we'll also talk about the auxiliary funds, restricted funds. We'll spend a little bit more detail on Proposition 301 and 207, and then also capital funds. And then we'll talk about next steps as well. So if we go to the next slide, Elsa, as I've done in the presentation since we've been doing this, I don't know when that was, '21 or '22, we've looked at the multi-year look at the general fund. So each of my presentations includes this. It does look largely like the presentation in January, with the exception of we did update the property taxes from new construction. That came in a little higher. You'll see the detail on the next slide. And for full disclosure, you know, we review these presentations over and over and over again. And I invariably sit down to write my comments so that I'm ready for tonight's presentation and I see errors that should have been corrected. So one of the corrections for this one, we still have TPD under differential tuition for fiscal year 25. I think I shared in January as well, but that's unlikely to have any impact for '25. Likely what will come forward during the next year will impact '26. So that should be zero or have nothing in that box, just in case anybody was wondering. So if we go to the next slide, we'll take a look at general fund sources. And this is another one where I found a lovely little error. There is a footnote at the bottom that shouldn't be there that says no changes from the February presentation. Unless I was dreaming, there wasn't a presentation in February. We actually did it in January, and there is a change from the January presentation. So I sit there and I just say, huh, yeah, that one got past me. But anyway, so that the second column of numbers for post fiscal year 25, new construction, we had estimated in January, we kept the 13.7 million that we'd had for '24, and it actually came in about 1.6 million higher, which is always good news for Maricopa. So it's additional resources that we anticipate receiving. So that brings our revenues up to about 759 million for fiscal year 25 as proposed. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll take a look at uses for the general fund as well. And this is very much as it has been from the January work session. I did bring the updated resources from the previous slide of the 759 million. So that does decrease the potential use of fund balance down from 20-plus million to just 19.7 million. Just 19.7 million, still a big number. When we look at the required expenses, just to recall that the .6 million does include the decrease from the ASRS decreased rate. It was a whopping $54,000 of a decline. But we'll take any decrease in ASRS that we can get, probably both as employees and as an employer. The budget reduction of 1%, we'll spend a little bit more time on that a little bit later. And the other new expenditures, just as a reminder, is the strategic compensation plan for year four. So we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And this is just an overview, kind of a summary of the different budget reductions that we've taken since 2022. And the total is 33.1 million when we finish with '25, or about 4.5% of the general fund budget, and that is over a four-year time period. Otherwise, everything else on this slide is the same as it was in January. We've not had any updates. And then if we go to the next slide, this again is an overview of the new expenditures proposed for the general fund. And they largely are the compensation plan, which of course is in accordance with four commitments. And then we had a couple of other items, again, an increase in the president's scholarship in the far column on the right of $300,000 and employee education pay increases, which correspond to employee policies of $350,000. So the total new expenditures of $25.3 million is what's proposed for fiscal year 25. And again, that is largely the same as January's presentation. So now we'll go to the next slide, which is new information. I had shared in January that we were working on how the 1% reduction would be implemented, that we'd had planned for fiscal year 25. So since then, the Advisory Budget Council, or ABC, had reviewed and ranked three different options that were presented to the group. And the above approach that you see was what was recommended to the chancellor and the chief operating officer, which they did accept the recommendation. And that is off the top of the 7.6 million. We did choose to fund instructional equipment to the tune of $2 million a year with the property tax shift that we use for funding capital programs. You may remember that in the different light items of the budget, that was shown as a transfer out of the general fund, because the spending happens in the capital fund. And so we eliminated that transfer out, so we took that $2 million off. The top for the 1% reduction and the remaining 5.6 million was distributed among the colleges, the district office divisions and district wide. The colleges overall is a .66% reduction. And the next slide will show you how that was, how that will be carried out. The third line down, district office divisions, the overall percentage reduction is .97%. That, I do not have the details to share with you yet today. There has been information shared with the district office leaders to look at how that will be implemented among the divisions. What I will share is the proposal, does those speak to four of the divisions taking a larger than the .97% reduction you see up there? And other divisions that are largely smaller divisions not taking a reduction at all? So well, if that is accepted, then that is what will hit the final budget that you will see in May. And then the district-wide overall reduction is 1.2%. And that gets us to the total of 7.6 million or 1% of the adopted fiscal year 24. With that, we can go to the next slide and you will see how the distribution of the reductions will be done. At the college level, again, the overall percentage is a .66% reduction. And so eight of the 10 colleges will be taking a .8% reduction. And Chandler Gilbert and Estrella Mountain will not be taking any reduction at all. And although they are not receiving any additional funding or not slated to receive additional funding for fiscal year 25, we do feel or the sentiment is that the fact that they did not receive any reduction still helps us continue down the path we started with the 24 reductions to start towards a more equitable approach to funding. Also knowing that we have a more equitable funding model that we are working towards hopefully now for fiscal year 26. But again, as I shared in January, there's a few things that need to get done and take place as we look to a new funding model that will hopefully be ready for '26.
Ms. Grunio, if I, just a quick question, I didn't want to interrupt the train here, but this percentage reduction proposal was something that came through ABC with the recommendation, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will go to the next slide. And we're now going to shift into the auxiliary fund. And this is the first look that you all have seen. Although if you've looked at previous presentations from prior year, you'll notice it's very similar. I anticipate that as we move further down the road of additional revenue streams or other types of entrepreneurial activities that might hit the auxiliary fund, that might change how this looks. But it's pretty consistent from year to year based on the revenues and resources that we have today. You'll see that there is, really each of the lines is increased by about 5% for revenues and expenditures. That could be based on anticipated growth in students when it comes to course fees, for instance. It can be anticipated growth in non-credit programs. That all hits the auxiliary fund. So there's a few different things, but this is really about capacity. And one thing I will share also is that the expenses that actually occur are based on the actual revenues that come in. So the building of the budget for the auxiliary fund is largely about what we anticipate might happen. But at the end of the day, we are only going to spend what comes in. So some of this is about capacity versus. Do our best in protecting actual revenues, but it's a little bit more difficult in the auxiliary fund, I think is what I'm trying to say, not so eloquent of a way. So with that, we can go then to the next slide, which takes us into the restricted fund. And the restricted fund is anything that comes from external sources that have strings attached to them, if you will. And we account for them in a separate place so that they have their own identification. And we know exactly what came in and went out by individual program even. Grants and contracts, STEM funding from the state. Because it is restricted to STEM purposes only, we do consider it restricted. Whether or not the state considers it restricted is not relevant to our books. And then, of course, we have Prop 207 and Prop 301, again, because they have restrictions associated with them. We cannot just repurpose them for operational funding, so we account for them in the restricted fund. And so you'll see the revenues there. We'll talk a little bit more about the fairly large change in the Prop 207 numbers for '25 when we get to, I think, a couple of slides from now. But you'll also see there that the large amount of expenditures that go out for the restricted fund are related to federal student aid that comes in and goes out. It's essentially, we're a conduit for that. We do assess eligibility for students, but as far as the dollars go, it comes in and goes right back out to the students. The one exception is the amount that we pay, that we use to offset the receivable from tuition. So if we have students who receive federal aid and the portion of it goes to tuition, we will withhold that. Any residual amount then is a check that is cut to the student. So there's some accounting entries we do at the end of the year to clear all of that up so we don't count, double count revenues and expenditures. And that's probably well more into the weeds than anybody is interested in other than accounting geeks like me. So with that, we can go to the next slide and we'll take a look at a little bit more detail around scholarships and LEAP, which is a financial aid program leveraging educational assistance partnerships. There is a state component. There is a matching component from us. That's that .4 million, the 400,000. And I think that's remained consistent for several years. And then there is, there are scholarships that come through. That first line is what comes through the foundation to us and to our students. And then other external would not be foundation-related. And then there are some notes at the bottom that speaks to the fact that the foundation also provides direct support to students, scholarships and other forms of support. And those are run about a million and a half and then 250,000 direct payments for the students. So none of that runs through Maricopa's financials in any way. But we did want to make sure that everybody understood that there is that aspect of what the foundation's work is as well. And with that, then we can go to the next slide. And this then gets to Prop 301. Again, you'll see very little change here. And that is because for several years now, Prop 301 funds have largely been allocated out to the college and various expenditures. The revenues have not changed significantly over the years. I mean, years ago, I think we were at 16 million. So if we're at 18 million for fiscal year 25, those numbers don't change significantly from one year to the next. The funds for Prop 301 are largely under the control of the Workforce Funding Council. So they do look at it on an annual basis to see are there any reasons to allocate it differently? Do we have balances that we didn't anticipate having? So that group does look at this on a continuous basis. With that, we can go to the next slide, which will provide details for Prop 207. So you'll see that large estimated beginning fund balance for fiscal year 25 of 49.8 million. This is largely coming from a decision that was recommended to the Workforce Funding Council, I think a month or so ago. And the Workforce Funding Council did support the recommendation. And that was to suspend the work, not the work of the council, but to suspend the proposal process that we started last fall to try to allocate out or determine how to allocate out or award out is probably a better term, up to $19 million for the coming fiscal year, for fiscal year 24. What you will also notice is that if you go about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see innovation awards, you'll see 6.6 million for fiscal year 25. That is the continuation of the awards that were done in the prior year. None of that has been suspended. We only decided to stop the awarding process of the 19 million as we wait to determine what types of expenditure limit reform we may have. So if that all goes through and everything goes the way it may go, then we are ready to go and to launch those programs as soon as we're ready to do that. But you may remember last year when we were talking about this, Prop 207 is not subject to the expenditure limit. And we do use, you'll see that kind of the second line of expenditures, the bridge funding of $5 million. That's one of the aspects we are doing to try to balance the general fund budget. We can increase that if we need to. So if something goes awry and we need to, we want to have these funds available for us to be able to do that. That will allow us to make some good strategic decisions and have some flexibility that we otherwise will not have. So that was the reason why we made that decision or that recommendation, and it was accepted. But again, we're ready to go as soon as we believe that circumstances allow us to move forward. We will proceed as quickly as we possibly can. If I did it makes sense to do so. So with that, then we'll go to the next slide and we're going to shift into the capital funding buckets. So you'll see on this one, the second line down in the proposed fiscal 25 column, the proposed tax shift for fiscal year 25 will be about 5.8 million. And again, this is the winding down of the 2004 bond program. And as the debt service is getting lower and lower each year, we're taking a portion of that and shifting that secondary property tax rate to the primary tax rate and designating it in our books for capital programs. And so with that shift, if that's approved, will be at 58.5 million for fiscal year 25. And then you can see the expenses and the lower portion of that slide. We'll have a little bit more detail on the next one. But you'll see that we're anticipating about $91 million in expenditures. So we anticipate an ending fund balance in the capital funds of about $122 million. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see more detail on the expenditure side of it. That first portion, expenditures by category with FPND noted afterwards. They are largely under the management of facilities, planning and development at the district office. And they do work in concert with the colleges, facilities, offices and vice presidents of administrative services. You'll see that the largest set aside for that is deferred maintenance, the second line from the bottom of that section. So for fiscal year 25, we anticipate deferred maintenance to be about 26.8 million. And then we do have another category of large remodels and instructional needs of 18.6 million. So that category is about 68.3 million. And then the bottom portion of that slide, the first 11 million is the, or are the allocations out to the colleges and the district office. That was one of the shifts we made as part of the 24 budget and not allowing the transfers from the general fund to support that. Instead, we're using the capital tax levy for that purpose. And again, you'll see the course equipment for the $2 million is in there as well. And so total capital expenditures for district-wide of 22.7 million, aside from the, those under the purview of facilities, planning and development.
Can I please interject with a quick question?
Yes.
Can you help me understand by the total district, district-wide capital expenditures, slide 16 says 22.7, but then on slide 15, the line item, additional district-wide capital expenditures is 18.0?
So it's actually going to be, if you, sorry, President Bitter Smith, Ms. Smith. If you look at slide 15, it's the 18 million plus the 4.7 million equals the 22.7. So I probably could have tweaked one of those two schedules to have a tie better.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're at the last slide, which is next steps. And so at your next regular board meeting on April 23rd, you'll have the complete budget schedule that will provide expenditures by college and by function in a much more detailed way than what you've seen in my presentations. And then after that, on May 28th, we will have the Truth in Taxation public hearing, which we're required to do in order to approve the tax shift for capital programs and then also ask for you all to adopt the, officially adopt the budget for fiscal year 25. With that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
And you usually are very good at answering. So let me turn to the board. And obviously, we have two more opportunities to ask questions, the April meeting and then the final vote in May. But are there questions, Ms. Grunio, Ms. Smith?
I think I've asked a similar question before, so thank you for your patience. On slide 11, under the restricted fund for grants and contracts, can you tell me how the 38.3 was projected? So it's like a flat, you know, we're anticipating no change from fiscal year 24 to 25. Can you tell me more about that?
Sure, I'll do my best. President Bitter Smith. Smith, so the district office, budget office reaches out to grants development, grants accounting, similar offices at the 10 colleges and tries to garner what we think is on the horizon as far as proposals and grants. And that largely feeds into this. And so you can imagine that we have multi-year programs that are dropping off and we have new programs that will be coming on in the coming year. That's all guesswork. So honestly, these numbers are oftentimes capacity. And, you know, we know that we have the ability to come back to the board to request a change to the adopted budget. Because if we have an opportunity to get a large grant and we don't have capacity within our adopted budget, we have to come back to the board and request that. So I can think about our funding that we had coming our way. And if I think about fiscal year 21, a lot of that started happening in spring of '20. So we were able to build capacity into the adopted budget for fiscal year 21. But had that happened a little bit later, we likely wouldn't have been able to do that. So as a standard practice, Maricopa has largely built some level of capacity into numbers such as these that will allow us to take advantage of opportunities that we couldn't have seen 10 months prior to that when we're actually building the budget. So I don't know if that's overly helpful to you, but that is the process by which we put these numbers.
Um, I don't know if this is the right venue. Turn to the chancellor to see if you want to have this discussion. I wonder to what extent that figure is used to motivate the development staff. So, you know, if that, if that number were to increase each year, then that would signal that there's an expectation that there would always be forward movement and improvement in the grants and contracts realm. But it may be that this isn't the place to have that motivational number, you know, buried on slide 11 of the budget report. There may be like another figure that the Maricopa Foundation prefers to use among the colleges. I just offer it as a reflection that it did strike me as a flat, which isn't as motivational as it could be or aspirational.
President Bitter Smith, Ms. Smith, I'm going to step a little bit out of my lane, just a little bit. And I'm sure somebody will correct me if they're going to be like, oh, my gosh, why should I say that? We do have a very robust grants development office centrally and a very robust grants offices throughout the colleges as well. It has been my experience that they are always looking for more opportunities for grant funding. And when, you know, one college hears something or the district office grants development team hears something, it's blasted out to everyone appears these opportunities. We also try to coordinate efforts where it makes sense as a system instead of potentially having 10 colleges compete with each other for the same buckets of dollars. So I do think there are large efforts ongoing, been there for a while. I started at Maricopa as a grant accountant, so I was a little bit, probably more in tune with it at that time. But I know there have been, there are robust efforts all the time. So I don't know that a number on a slide is going to deter them from continuing to do that great work. But I take your comment completely. And we'll circle back with my team to look at how we develop this number and see if there is something that would make more sense.
Thank you.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kim. I would agree with everything you said, Mrs. Smith. That's a great question. As you were probing, I knew that that was going to come. Because when you look at 38.3, adopted 24, and you see the 38.3, it doesn't suggest any form of aspiration. However, we all have built in our goals to increase things over from one year to the next. So I suppose, Kim, a question that I might have from this would be, is the 38.3 million, while that was a capacity number in the past, is that the actual number at the end of the fiscal year that all grants totaled across the system? Now, I know we've, I can remember a board meeting or two when you added up all the grants that we received and you approved in one night, may have exceeded 10 to 15 million. However, that's over three, four, or five-year period. So that one year might actually be a million dollars as opposed to the five that we were awarded. So that would be a question I'd have. And I think you're right, it's a great question. Where, where should we reflect the aspiration? And I think the important thing to keep in mind here is that this is capacity, where we have the opportunity to exceed it. And this is just for, for one year. So I'm a little surprised that the level of this number that I had to think about, the fact that we get a lot of multi-year that are broken down and they maybe add up to that or just under it, right, Kim?
You are. And thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for those comments. And that is something we will pull together because I think it's a great thing to look at. And we can look at maybe even the last five years, what that has looked like, budget versus actual for these dollars. Absolutely happy to pull that and it'll be a good thing for us to look at. So thank you for that.
Other questions from the board? Sullivan?
I'm going to put on a Gene McGrath hat for any of you who have been part of that conversation. So let's move to slide 15 and 16, if I can read those correctly. On, on the capital overview and millions with the tax shift, often we see a graph. often we see a graph that explains the actual tax distribution and potential for impact to our citizens through their property tax. Have you done one of those and can you share what that tax implication is exactly for the property owner as in the past?
Absolutely. President Bitter Smith, Mrs. Sullivan. So yes, we have that and that's actually in the budget schedule that you will see in April. Yeah, and I'm not sure why I didn't include it today. I think normally I do, so I can go back and look at that one. So we'll pull the actual number. I don't have it off the top of my head. What I do know is whatever we are proposing is an overall lower tax rate than the prior year. So the tax shift is never intended to increase taxes. It is only intended to, or its only outcome is to continue kind of that downward trajectory of the tax rate, but not quite at the level it would have been had we just reduced it by 5.8 million, by recapturing it. So the decline is probably 6 million or 6.5 million. So yeah, but we'll make sure that that schedule is in the, in the budget schedule.
I think that's going to be an important piece of information for us as we move into other conversations. So, excuse my voice. So if there's an opportunity perhaps to send that to us earlier, that would be a good thing, I think.
Absolutely happy to do so.
Great. My second question then moves to the next slide. And it involves deferred maintenance. I remember when I came on the board, we saw an overview of deferred maintenance cumulative number. I think it was something, well, my memory will serve me. It was over $300 million. I think it was hovering around 360, 380, somewhere in that ballpark. So now we're looking at a deferred maintenance expense of 26 million, 26 million plus. How are we, how does that impact that overall number I saw a number of years ago, number one? And number two, given time, when are we due next for deferred maintenance overview of the district overall?
That, President Bitter Smith, Mrs. Sullivan. So a very good question. And yes, we should have an updated chart available for that. I don't have that handy either. I know facilities, planning and development tracks that, all of that very closely. And we have had conversations about needing to get an update to the governing board on those numbers and where we are and what the progress is. We're, I think, working that some of the thoughts are to work that into the some potential proposed changes to board policies around procurement. And one of the pieces that I think will come into play there is deferred maintenance and proposing reporting instead of necessarily action items. And that reporting might make more sense. I don't know if any of you recall, I'm sure Dr. Thor will recall. Previously, when we were doing the 2004 bond program, we would have quarterly reports of bond activities. And I feel like deferred maintenance needs some sort of an update, whether it's quarterly, twice a year or annually, we need to be doing something. And you're right, I think it was 330 million is what I'm thinking of.
You're less than I.
And we had, we had a 10-year plan with which to attack that. And every year it gets analyzed and looked at as to what the right activities are for that year. I do know for sure, the first couple of years, we were able to realize some savings by grouping projects together and where we, you know, might have done a roof here and a roof there and a roof there. We did all of the roofs together, which allowed us to create some really good savings in that program and then turn around and accomplish more projects than we had originally planned. So, and there were more than 5,000 projects. I don't remember the exact number on that either. So, yes, absolutely. We're due for an update and we'll make sure that we get that. I don't know that I can swear it will be for the April meeting. But we'll look at what a good cadence will be too for reporting those types of updates.
And then, again, excuse me, I'm not sure that I need it absolutely or we need it absolutely by the April meeting. I think it's more of a, an overall comment. Where are we in the progress on that deferred maintenance plan? And when are we going to do another update so that we anticipate the future certainly in cost allocations? And then third, what was my third one? The overall impact so that we can be considering the implications for policy as we do policy reviews annually. I think that if we could begin to pay some more attention to that from our perspective as a board, that would be helpful. So those would be my two comments for this evening and those categories. Thank you.
Sullivan, thank you for that. I think that's a good reminder because at our board retreat last month, there was a reflection that the board as a whole is, would like more information just generally in where we are on the very mundane but very important issue of maintenance. So.
Yes, absolutely.
Other questions from the board? Dr. Thor? Dr. Narini?
I had some weird questions, but I think you've answered some of those. But you did make mention, where, where do our course fees land in the budget?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Narini, they are in the auxiliary fund. So they are on slide 10, and they fall under the first line of tuition and fees.
Okay. And then the other question I had on, on slide eight, we talked about instructional equipment or $2 million reduction. And then on slide 16, we have something called course equipment. Is that, is that the same thing?
It is the same thing. And I thought I had made sure those labels matched and apparently I did not. They are the same thing. We've called them different things over the years.
So are we going to, are we going to reduce it by 2 million or are we going to keep it at 2 million?
No. So, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip through the slides and I'm not getting there very quickly. So in the general fund, you would see a reduction of the 2 million from fiscal year 24 to 25 because we're no longer going to fund it out of the general fund. And so you'll see a reduction on the revenue side of capital of that 2 million. But you'll see the expenditure is still there of the $2 million. So all it is doing is really shifting the funding of that activity.
Okay. And, and so is that the equipment that is the $5,000 of more that, that the school, the district will be paying for instead of the students, their fees?
Yes, yes. President Bitter Smith, Dr. Narini, that is the, the process that went into place, I want to say, I think, three years ago, when we went through the first round of changes to the course fee guidelines. And the assessment was that we would do well with a couple million dollars a year in the budget for those costs rather than charging course fees for those. So that is that bucket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, thank you. I have a couple questions, some of them just out of curiosity. On slide four, on the general fund sources, primary taxes are going up, new constructions going up, tuition and fees are going up. Why would the SRP in lieu of taxes be going down?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, that is just a function of the valuation that comes from the county assessor's office. So my, my guess would be that the valuation of SRP's property actually probably went down. Whereas the new construction then kind of takes over part of that. So our in lieu constantly goes up and down based on where the valuations are. And then that gets balanced out based on what our primary tax levy gets set out.
Interesting. On slide nine, we have for many, many years been promised an equitable funding model. And now you're saying we'll see one in FY '26. What's causing the delay?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor. Well, I think there's probably a number of things. I mean, the first thing is the, the concern about adequate resources overall, which an equitable funding model was, has never been slated as identifying an adequate level of funding. It's just essentially how are we going to reallocate dollars from one to another is what ends up happening when your pot of revenues are not growing, if you will. So we did, it was part of the strategic plan. We did refer that to the vice presidents of administrative services. We held several retreats in trying to work through what a new funding model would look like. And part of the purpose in that was to move away from funding only based on FTSE. There, so then it turned into conversations about headcount. And then we all sat back and said, what's the difference between FTSE and headcount? It's still based on competing within ourselves to try to figure out where the dollars are. And it essentially became, we just kept going down all these different rabbit holes of what about this? And what about that? And what about that? And we finally stopped and said, we can't solve all of Maricopa's problems with a new funding model. So we just stopped at that point in time. And one of the things that we kept coming back to as well is not having an academic master plan. Because how do you know where your dollars are supposed to go if you don't really have that master plan? And the facilities master plan is also baked into, you know, once you get your academic plan, then you look at your facilities plan and your IT plan and kind of all those things are supposed to go together. So it was kind of at that point where we stopped and said, we, we have these things that we need to have in place in order to do this the right way. Could we come up with a way just to reallocate the dollars? We could. But we didn't really feel like that was a new funding model. It solved one problem, but didn't really address a whole bunch of other problems that as Maricopa, we feel like we're trying to tackle. So I had met with the chancellor at one point and just said, I, I just, we're struggling to figure out where we go from here. That moves us away from simply based on FTSE or headcount. And maybe a new model have elements of those, but likely won't have that be the only way we determine how to provide funding. So that work has just kind of stopped until we get some of these other things out of the way. And so that's, that's kind of the best answer I have for you. I really going into that, I thought this would be much simpler and much straightforward, much more straightforward. And after hours, we're all looking at each other going, we're not any further than where we were before. And we feel like this is just trying to solve everything. And that's not what this is really going to do. So that's, that's where we are. The, the hope is that it will be for '26. We'll be past the expenditure limit question. We'll have, you know, maybe some other things that are available to us. We will, I believe, have an academic master plan. So that will help us move forward, I think, in that space. And then we have to determine if we have the right resources with which to actually move that work forward as well.
I think Dr. Gonzalez wants to comment.
If I may add, I think I mentioned this at one of our board meetings at Phoenix College is also looking at the fixed costs that are making up our budget. 72 to 73% is wrapped in personnel. Probably another 10% is, you know, keeping our lights on, keeping our fleets running, et cetera, et cetera. So at the end of the day, estimated, Kim, what capacity are we really talking about in terms of if we had to take today's dollars without any infusion of additional dollars, significant infusion of dollars? What are we really talking about here in terms of?
Definitely less than 10% of the general fund budget is going to be talking about.
This plan has to take that into consideration, right? And, and so I, I mentioned that our, at that board meeting, that perhaps of sort of a voluntary migration of people from one place to another might help adjust some of those budgets. That in itself is a task and a lift. And one of the things that could potentially be on the table called the Maricopa migration.
Okay. Thank you. Two more, if you'll indulge me. On slide 13, Prop 301 sources, we're continuing an allocation for the Phoenix College IT Institute and the Maricopa Corporate College. Do we anticipate that that will be phased out at some point?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor. I've not had any of those conversations to date. But it's likely for the IT institute, for instance, and even corporate college. I, my sense of it is that that needs to get wrapped into the budget model conversation. So it may or may not be from 301. There may or may not be central funding for those specifically and just become part of the allocation that Phoenix College receives or that the district office receives. So at this point, we've just kept it until we can kind of get through that next hurdle.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense to me. And my last question is for slide 15 on the capital overview having to do with the tax shift from primary to secondary for the purposes of building a capital fund in lieu of seeking a general obligation bond. My recollection is at the time that we did that, that we had a, a schedule of, of projected revenues and balances. How are we doing on that schedule?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, that is something I'll provide as part of the update. But from my last look at it, because that also gets included in the, the budget schedule that you'll see in April. And we're still right on target for where we had planned to be and haven't really had to deviate from that whatsoever. And I believe the tax shift is scheduled, it should be for fiscal year '27, would be the last, last tax shift because our last debt service payment will be July 1 of 2027.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you for the cough drop. It helped. My question goes to slide seven. It was something I just wanted to come back to. And that's the compensation plan. We've had in the past updates around the intention of an annual adjustment tied to the compensation plan. And I believe we have two more years left this coming year and then one more on the original compensation plan that we approved. So with that, I'm curious if there is going to be any conversation about in the breakdown of what this year's compensation plan will be or is. And then when do you begin to address the issues for us to look at a compensation plan after next? Not this upcoming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year.
Before I, yeah, Ms. Grineo answer that because Dr. Gonzalez and I were just having a conversation. There is an update that we will be getting as board members here in the next few weeks for us to review. So let's start with that, which the question linger is coming. Ms. Grineos, or something you want to add beyond that?
Yeah, President Bitter Smith, Mrs. Sullivan. So I was going to get out of my lane a little bit more again, and Dr. Gonzalez or Georgia will correct me too if I'm wrong. But I believe there is a presentation slated for April for an update on the compensation plan. And the work is underway to look at what phase two is of the compensation plan.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And my understanding, and please tell, feel free to respond. But I think we're going to get that in writing to review. And then if we need further instructions, am I correct about that, Dr. Gonzalez?
President Bitter Smith and President Sullivan. She can still be president. Yes, we will be submitting the report in writing to the board. Also, we're going through a market analysis to update and prepare for the next round of the compensation plan. So you will have that information coming to you soon.
So the written plan will be presented to us prior to the work session? Or it's a written plan only? Or can you tell me the, the framework for all of that, please?
I will try to answer that because that's being directed from a conversation in response to the board asking for more information coming to us in writing as opposed to having to go through slides that we can read on our own.
I understand that.
So, and staff has responded to that request. So it's going to come to us in writing. But then if we have questions and a need for a worksday session, we will certainly schedule that.
So how, when will we expect the written report so we could be, if we have questions, planned for a work session for dialogue around that?
We will be submitting that information in the first part of April.
So we'll have it by tax day? Just curious.
We can, we can work to have that by tax day.
I would appreciate just a sense of that so that if we needed to add a work session to the April meeting, then we would know to do that.
We can definitely meet that expectation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Dr. Gonzalez, any closing thoughts or comments?
President Bitter Smith, again, thank you all for your participation, comments, feedback, questions. We appreciate it. Thank you, Kim, to you and your team and Leanne and your team as well for the presentation here today.
Let me add my thanks to you. You had a long number of weeks and months, so we appreciate your work on this and many other issues. So with that, since there are no more questions, I will adjourn the work study session. And we will reconvene at 6:30 for our regular board meeting. It is 6:30 on the dot. So we want to try to stay on time as much as possible. For those that are joining us online, we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Just click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And with that, at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting at the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of March 19, 2024. For the record, I will now call a roll of the board members. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
And I don't believe Mr. Burnett has joined us online, correct? And myself. We have a forum, six of us are here. And so with that, I will ask for our Gateway Community College Positive Peer Mentors. And there they are. It is if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we will stand to let you do that.
For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. If you'll hang on just a minute, I need to announce the substitutions and then we're going to hear from you with the student life report. Before I do that, I just want to tell the audience that Dr. Anne Suzuki is the interim vice president of Student Affairs. She's here for Dr. Jenna Schwartz for Paradise Valley Community College. And then with that announcement, we will come back to our student life reports from our Pledge of Allegiance leaders, the Gateway Community College Positive Peer Mentors. You would introduce yourself and then we will look forward to your presentation and welcome. We're glad to have you.
President Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. We are from Gateway Community College and we thank you for having us here tonight. Next slide, please. At Gateway Community College, we are Positive Peer Mentors. I am Lisa Moreno and I am completing my counseling and psychological science degree at Gateway Community College and transferring to South Mountain Community College to pursue their new bachelor's degree in behavioral science.
My name is Amanda Hannah and I'm an international student coming from the Middle East. I am completing my associate's degree at Gateway Community College in Psychology and I'm transferring to ASU next semester to complete my bachelor's degree and eventually become an industrial organizational psychologist. Our two other peer mentors could not be here with us today. Rebecca is a softball athlete completing her associate's degree in social work and education, while Dahaba is a mother who is aiming to become a pastoral counselor. Next slide, please.
Gateway is the first community college of wellbeing. What does that mean? As a college of wellbeing, Gateway works to create an environment of meaningful learning and engagement using positive psychology. There is established research that demonstrates that sense of belonging, character strengths, hope, grit and purpose make a real difference in achieving student dreams. As a part of our college's ecosystem, these five components promote and develop meaningful connection, resilience, motivation, empowerment and academic success. The Positive Peer Program has been a step forward in accomplishing these goals and making Gateway's vision come to life. Next slide, please.
The Positive Peer Mentor Program was designed by a team of graduate students at the University of Pennsylvania. The program was funded through the MCLI Horizon Grant as well as the Department of Education's Title V Grant. Moving forward, we hope it will be funded by federal work study. We focus on concepts from positive psychology that are well-supported in research and that are, and improve students' and our own wellbeing and academic success. These concepts also align perfectly with Maricopa's first-year experience learning outcomes. This is important because we know the first year is critical to student success. Too many students do not go on to their second year. Next slide, please.
The four of us are students in the social behavioral sciences. As Positive Peer Mentors, we've had a great work-based experience, an opportunity for all of us to get a better feel for the field of counseling, social work and connecting with others. This year, we made it our goal to target two areas in the college, student outreach and FYE classes. We've hosted many outreach events. We've tabled and done various walkabouts with our campus therapy dog Dash, promoting wellbeing to Gateway students. We passed out cards with various wellbeing tips and a QR code to our wellbeing website. During final weeks last fall, we did an event called Dancing and Dad Jokes in front of the DEI Center at Gateway. Sidebar, what's a snake's favorite subject?
History.
We played music and dance while promoting peer mentors to students and telling them dad jokes. Students would smile and laugh just a bit, so their minds weren't so focused on the stress of finals. That event was so much fun and we're able to showcase how taking a moment to smile and enjoy a moment can better your wellbeing. Tomorrow, we are participating in Gateway's Wellness Fair with a table on creativity. We'll be creating vision boards and gratitude journals with students.
We've also integrated videos about valuable wellbeing components that were sent to FYE instructors to include in their lesson plans. Next slide, please. Hi guys, this is Amanda. So today we're going to be talking about developing a growth mindset. So a growth mindset does not necessarily mean that you have to be good at everything you do in life. It means that your success and talent is always susceptible to growth. Nothing really comes easy in life if you think about it and you have to fight for what you want. And that is done by pushing yourself to the limit and never giving up. So a growth mindset is when students believe that their abilities can be improved and developed. Efforts is your means to an end and not the end. Studies have shown that students' grades have been increased and college graduation rates have been increased when students develop a growth mindset. You shouldn't see failure as a way to describe yourself. If you don't try, how well you know how far you can go. Personally, I have never been good at public speaking, but after entering several programs throughout high school, it actually ignited a passion for me, which is public speaking. And now I'm loving it and have entered a career that involves it. A real-life example of a fixed mindset is when students say, I'm not good at math or biology or physics or any sort of subject. So this is what the Learning Center is for. Learning Center actually implies a growth mindset. It helps you develop and improve your skills and hopefully get better results. These videos are also found on our website. Here, students can access them and other valuable resources. Don't wear this or this today. Realized students are often more willing to listen and take advice from peers and other students because they find us relatable. Next slide, please.
Next slide again as well. Your mentors are here to guide students through their academic journeys. We share our own personal experiences, challenges and solutions, so students do not feel alone. We want to help students find resources and use them. We want students to feel like they belong. We want students to succeed together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. We're glad to have you here. Congratulations to the Gateway team. You are welcome to stay for the full meeting, but something tells me you might have homework or other things you need to do. So we will excuse you if you sneak out. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we need another joke, just.
Another dad joke? You want another dad joke? You have one to share?
One more. Or not.
I had a whole book about it. It's called Dad Jokes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
President Bittersmith, in the beginning of the meeting, when Ms. Grineo was complaining that she didn't have a song, I was sitting here thinking that you ought to make dad jokes your thing. So everybody who comes to the podium should have a dad.
I'm not sure I can compete with the presentation we just had. So there you go. Let's move on to our faculty executive council report. Dr. Marzio. It looks like Dr. Meredith Warner is making this. I didn't describe, sorry, my apologies.
No worries.
And we are not doing French or Latin or anything because as we just heard, it's a different regime, which is no offense to the previous regime.
Say dommage.
Oh no, it's now I'm troubled. When we're not doing that because my ability to respond to you in French is zero, so. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, chancellor, CEC colleagues, honored students and guests. Jumbo. Tonight, I am honored to share the podium with Dr. Meredith Warner, District Director of Academic and Student Affairs, to discuss how peer mentoring leads to persistence. So if we could go to the next slide. Last year, you recall, Dr. Camille Newton and Dr. Warner presented on the benefits of the first-year experience, the FYE courses. As this slide shows, the data support that 83% of students who took FYE courses in fall 2022 or spring 2023 are still enrolled and attending Maricopa. Compare that with only 47% of those who did not take an FYE course in the same time period. Next slide, please. But FYE is not the only tool in the box that can lead to persistence. MDRC, a major academic research institute, presented data collated from hundreds of institutions that have researched on other areas of support programs that lead to persistence. And one of these is peer mentoring. So as you can see here from the bullet points, peer mentoring nearly doubled graduation rates among participants in three community colleges in New York City and three colleges in Ohio. It increased college persistence and credit accumulation for the Detroit community colleges and increased students' credit accumulation and certificate attainment in Texas. With this in mind, next slide, please, let's talk about what we are seeing in Maricopa. And for this, I will turn it over to Dr. Warner.
Thank you, Dr. Marzio. I think it's important for you to note that we're going to highlight a few of our colleges, but it's not the totality of colleges in Maricopa that offer peer mentoring programs. Nearly every college does some facet of peer mentoring. But I want to highlight a few of them because I think it enumerates the need for peer mentoring, but the obvious lack of resources and support to do so. Phoenix Colleges has been, Phoenix College has been doing peer mentoring since 2008. They revamped it in 2012. And in 2016, when they were awarded the Title V Grant, they were really able to put efforts toward a true student success specialist model, which does bring students into the classroom in significant classes where you see high attrition and low completion and opportunity for persistence. And so those would be classes like English and math and bio, chemistry, physics, even our ESL classes. They employ students through the Title V Grant to support other students in many sections. And if you see, even in the last year, they now have 34 student success specialists in 91 sections of their courses. Next slide. And what you're going to see in the next slide is that there's a measurable difference from students who actually have their peer support in those classes than those that don't. And that's an important note for Phoenix College. But Phoenix isn't the only one. Next slide. A few years ago, during the pandemic, I've been part of our developmental head council for a long time. It's part of our guided pathways work to redesign developmental education. And a couple of our faculty from Australia Mountain came because they had been awarded Title V as well to talk about embedded math-specific tutors who were peers of the students in the class. And they were seeing a measurable impact in Math 114 and Math 141. And Math 141, for those of you who are not familiar, is the class for the associates of arts majors in our program. So those who, as we heard from our Gateway students, talk about the fact that students are afraid of taking math or they don't think they're good at math, right? And so we were seeing measurable improvements in those classes, but because the Title V Grant couldn't continue to support it, they didn't continue the program. So they had one year of funding, good success data, but it didn't continue. But it should have. Next slide. Last year, if you remember, right here in this very room, right before I think Camille and I may have presented, we heard from peer success coaches at Glendale Community College who had just implemented their program. And if you see in this slide, one of the most remarkable pieces is that they now have data that they may not have had last year. Participants who took part in their peer mentoring program persisted nearly 12 to 15% higher rates term to term and fall to fall than those who did not participate in the peer mentoring program. It works, but if you look at this slide, you see also funded by HERF dollars, federal work study dollars, not sustainable dollars. Next slide. So I want to make sure that I say before I pass it back over to Lisa, that these are good programs. The MDRC, the CCRC and the Gartner Institute have been very strategic in sharing data for hundreds of community colleges across our country to talk about things that really affect persistence and completion in community colleges today. Students, learning and living and breathing and working with other students are the true persistence makers and completion makers for our programs.
So as a happy coincidence, you just heard from the Gateway students about their peer mentoring program. As mentioned, they supported this work by an MCLI Horizon Grant and may be able to leverage federal work study funds in the future. But what these programs need is sustainable support from the district. The hope is that this presentation, both of them, will open the door for these discussions. Next slide, please. So before I close with my haiku, do you have any questions?
Indeed, I'd like, by the way, thank you for the data and the results. Very, very helpful to the board. Questions? Dr. Norene?
So these, these peer mentors are funded through grants?
Most of them are through grants. We have some with the HERF funds. There are, I believe, Paradise Valley, maybe one of the only colleges that has a sustained peer mentoring program and has for some time, Ann Chandler.
So I'd, I'd have to go back and check, but as you know, that course fees are near and dear to my heart. And I know that we've had some courses, especially math courses, who've added course fees to pay for mentors and tutors. How are these different than, than those students or those?
So it depends on the college, I believe. The peer mentor is specifically a student who would either be a year ahead of them or a semester ahead of them as opposed to paying for a math tutor. And often the math tutors are in math enhancement areas. Tutoring areas are not directly embedded in the classroom and most of these programs have our students directly embedded into the classroom.
So, so some, some students will have access to, to these peer mentors as well as the math mentors as well?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Davis? President Bittersmith, members of the board, how do you fund yours if yours is sustainable?
Oh, okay.
So an individual college budget decision.
Okay. Great, thank you.
With that, thank you.
I will have my haiku course. I have to close. That's my, that's my thing, right? No dad jokes, a haiku. Guiding light in peers, wisdom shared, growth unfolds, mentorships embrace.
Thank you, Beau. Let's move on to the adjunct faculty association report. Skimbosh.
President Bittersmith, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez and all other attendees tonight, welcome. Thank you for coming and joining us in the meeting. Since our last meeting, normally I have a, an AFG meeting, an adjunct faculty group meeting between our governing board meetings, but because it was spring break and our meetings happen on Saturdays, we gave all of our adjunct faculty reps the week off. And so we will be meeting this week to discuss our ongoing business, but I have a few updates on some other things for you. As of when I had written my report, we had submitted our recommendations for the adjunct faculty compensation for the upcoming year to the CAC. And we are currently awaiting a vote to choose one of the two options that were put forward regarding service adjunct pay. We opted to not recommend sunsetting the pay, but we did put forth two options on either keeping the pay or going with another rate. So that is being considered right now by CAC as not all members were at the past meeting and they needed time to digest the information. Since I think when I made my presentation, I overwhelmed. I overwhelmed everybody with all of the data that we had gathered and were ourselves confused about at times. And we are looking forward to seeing what we can present to you and, and share our information on that. However, we felt very confident in the recommendations that we put forward. Right now, we've moved on to our outstanding adjunct faculty awards. We have just, just closed the nominations and we had a fabulous response of 157 nominations from the combined colleges. And I have to shout out Rio and Paradise Valley. Rio had 36 nominations for outstanding adjuncts and Paradise Valley had 29. And so they are very proud of their peers and their adjunct faculty members there. So at this point, we will be sending the information to the colleges. There will be three outstanding adjuncts voted on for each college, and we will be having our banquet on April 25th, if I can remember correctly, where we will honor them. And so at this point, it goes to the colleges to have the reps and the appropriate, whether it's DPAAs or other designated members, to help vote on the adjuncts for their college. And I want to say that also some of the colleges are looking at making this a bigger issue and making it into something where they incorporate it into their end-of-the-year celebrations. Some of the colleges are also using past outstanding adjunct members to help vote on the new outstanding adjunct members. So every college handles it a little bit differently, but we come to the agreement that all of us have three members that will be put forth as their outstanding adjuncts. And as we are, our other business that is coming up is that we'll be doing another set of elections because we have some members whose term is up and a couple who are stepping down due to other job issues. And so we'll be starting that, and we've done ranked voting in the last election. We had, and it worked very well, so we'll be continuing with that. With that, I think that's my simple update for you. And any questions from anybody about any of our topics?
Any questions for Kim? Not, thank you very much. Appreciate the report. Well, we will continue with the staff representation update. Mr. Calvin DeBol and Ms. April Rowland. Welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Bitter Smith, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CC, and all presidents. Next slide, please. So we weren't able to be with you in February, so we wanted to make sure we represented or featured our Mesa Community College Staff Representation members. Alvin Bridges is the exempt Senator for Mesa. Brian Estranod is another staff representative. Noel Marlin and Cecilia Quiros are exempt staff representation. Next slide, please. Jade Sullivan, Stacy Argo are not, are, are non-exempt staff representatives, and Jim Hills are sworn officer. Next slide, please. So we're also featuring Glendale Community Colleges for March's highlight. Rico Moron is the exempt Senator. Christina Ojeda is exempt, as well as Cecilia Davis. Next slide, please. Tony Moke, Amy Marple are non-exempt members, and Kelly Yamari is our sworn officer for Glendale Community College.
So for March, we wanted to highlight some work being done with policy, and particularly, in particular, dignity at work. And this is an admin regulation that we've been working on. Defining dignity, Donna Hicks, who's a renowned author, and she does many work around dignity, dignity in the workplace. She defines it as the mutual recognition of the desire to be seen, heard, listened to, and treated fairly, to be recognized, understood, to feel safe in the world. And if you look at Board Policy 2.2, Treatment of Faculty and Staff, the chancellor will create enable conditions for faculty and staff that are fair, safe, and dignified, in compliance with all federal and state laws. Next slide. So if you look at the first bullet point, I'm not going to sit here and read it, but I will say that in a nutshell, what started this work was about two years ago, staff representation started to see trends of many complaints coming in. And the complaints were of behaviors going on in the workplace, but they weren't breaking policy. And at the end of the day, that's what this admin regulation is about. It's, it's about the behaviors on a regular basis that create work centers of fear, that creates fear of retaliation, but they do not go as far as to break a policy or an admin reg. Over the past 15, 20 years, I've been many organizations bringing dignity at work type policy to the work centers to make sure that all employees feel respected. All employees feel like they're heard and they're in a place that's safe. So we currently have an admin regulation drafted up. And at first, we did this as a staff policy. And after speaking with our colleagues, we just, we quickly discovered we needed faculty to assist us. And so this was an admin regulation we worked with faculty on. So we collaborated, collaborated with them because this will cover all employees. We have the draft ready to go. We're currently working on a standard operating procedure of how are we going to take this admin reg and how are we going to operationalize it? That work is almost complete, and we are continuing to work on it. Next slide, please. We are looking at starting training in fall of '24. Tentatively, and also tentatively, we'd like to have the admin reg and the SOP go live in January, first of 2025. This is an admin reg that, I know that I have dealt with a lot of situations in my 20 months in this, in this role. It feels much longer. But I, I feel very strongly that this is something that will really help Maricopa as a whole. It will help faculty, it will help staff, it will help everyone. It'll bring work centers to a better place where employees feel safer, they feel respected. It will positively affect student success as you will have more employees who are looking forward to coming to work. They want to come to the work center. I think that goes a long way toward all of our communities that we touch. So hopefully, we'll see that in the next year. That is our report. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Dr. Thor?
Thank you. Calvin, you started your presentation citing Board Policy 2.2, Treatment of Faculty and Staff. Are you finding that policy to be adequate to address the issues that you're citing? Or will you be satisfied with the adoption of an administrative regulation and the standard operating procedures as addressing the need?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, thank you for that question. That's actually a discussion we've had. That policy as written, it's, it is very general, but it, it does very specifically say what the intent is. So I, I hesitate to say for sure we need to add to it or make it more robust, if you will. I, I think the intent is completely there. I, I think once we move forward with this admin reg and we can see how it is affecting Maricopa, and if we need to relook at that and perhaps make a recommendation, we absolutely will. But it has been a discussion. We've looked at it. At this time, I, I would say, to be honest, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
And Calvin, I would just point out, Dr. Thor is the board member assigned to, to be the policy.
I am very.
As I'm sure you know, so if there are issues, certainly feel free to, to visit with me, but certainly Dr. Thor is, is the person that has been drugged to do that duty and continues to say yes, which I appreciate. Other questions, Ms. Al?
I have a, maybe a couple, going back to the same issue. I know within the strategic plan, there's certainly consideration about respect and treating employees with dignity and embracing that as a goal. So are you seeing this activity as being an element of achieving measurable success in that goal?
Absolutely. I, I think that because of the gap in policy and what we're trying to address here, you often see complaints that come up. At the end of the investigation, at the end of looking at everything, the, the final report says, no policy was broken. However, dot, 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 dot. I think if you look at the investigations that have gone on in the past five, six, seven years, and you, you look at a lot of situations that we have that it's very hard to resolve, I, I think that you could probably look at historically, look at that, and then once this is implemented, see the change and look at how it changes certain processes once we can implement, implement this admin reg into those processes.
So my, a follow-up comment to that, it's certainly not our place as board members to see those reports. And you did use the phrase gap, which then takes us back to Dr. Thor's comment around board policy. I bring up strategic planning, and then you move to the issue of training as probably an, an outgrowth or an element then to that strategic planning piece. So what, where we remain appropriate is to be looking then at the policy. So just to clarify then for me, who will do the trainings and how will you measure success and how will that feed into achievement of the goal and, and the strategic plan and then subsequently move to us as board policy in some convoluted way?
So the, the training will be multifaceted. In fact, the performance success initiative that's going on right now has dignity components already embedded into it. And we've had conversations of once this is, is a, a policy in an admin reg, what can be embedded into performance success, which goes out through all employees, right? There will certainly be certain, certain aspects of this that will be separate, but what are the channels or the platforms? How do we get that out to everyone? You know, acknowledgement of this part of the annual knowledge. A lot of different ways we can go about doing that, and we're having those discussions. The training itself, I think there's a lot of different opportunities through performance success, through the various trainings that we do deploy to employees to make sure that they're getting the information and they're understanding what this is. As far as measurable, I, I think that it's going to be hard to, to look at that and have hard data to say, we can see a decrease in investigation, or we can see a decrease, decrease in this area. I think it's hard to benchmark, but I know with, with what staff representation gets, what I'm sure FEC listens to, I, I think we, the gap is very obvious. So perhaps that's something we need to take a closer look at, is how do we benchmark? How do we measure?
So at some point, we'll get an update that may lead to a board policy shift. But that'll stay at the administrative college staff levels and all of that. So we won't get involved in that. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Any other questions? Not Calvin and April, thank you very much. Okay, we are now on to celebrating some emeritus awards, and I would like to ask Dr. Loschinsky and the emeritus representatives from SCC to come to the podium. Dr. Loschinsky, I will let you do the presentations.
Thank you very much, President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues and guests. It is my honor and privilege to be here tonight to present two of Scottsdale's finest faculty members for the Emeritus Distinction, and that are Larry Williams and Roger McKinney. To help me and us in doing so tonight, I've asked actually their individuals who made those nominations to be here as well to sort of sing their praises and talk about the why behind their nomination. So to kick us off this evening, I'd like to invite Gary Ward, the Chair of the Department of Hospitality, Tourism, and Culinary Arts for SCC, to come forward to introduce our first recipient. Gary.
Dr. Loschinsky. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, chancellor, guests. My name is Gary Ward, and it's my pleasure to be here today to recognize Mr. Larry Williams. Larry began his 26-year career with SCC shortly after the first hospitality program was initiated, along with culinary arts program in the mid-'80s. Scottsdale was firmly enmeshed in the boom of resorts and world-famous destinations. This new program was perfectly placed to grow over the coming years, as it has. He always held Ohio's regard for the integrity of the program, and college and his career was focused on maintaining those high standards. He worked tirelessly to establish articulation agreements with NAU and to ensure SCC was fully engaged as a partner. He received the SCC Teacher of the Year Award in 2001, too, for his outstanding contribution to student success. He also acted as the faculty senate president in 1998. Larry dedicated his experience, knowledge, and career to seeing the HRM program become a substantive influence in Scottsdale and the state of Arizona. Larry has an, has had an exemplary career as a successful advocate for the hospitality and tourism business in Arizona, and his career was dedicated to the service of Scottsdale Community College and is deserving of this emeritus honor. On a personal note, I wanted to say thank you, Larry, for always being there for me on a professional level and being a good friend for the many times I need to go. Well-deserved honor. Thank you. Got to change glasses here. Gary. Good evening, President Bitter Smith, chancellor, members of the board, and colleagues and associates throughout Maricopa. I'd like to take a moment to recognize my sister, Joy. And my brother, who's been able to join us this evening. And I'd like to say that I'm deeply, deeply honored to stand before you to receive this recognition as, after 26 years as residential faculty, I add in the before residential faculty, and I'm continuing to teach as adjunct since retirement. It adds up to 32 years and still counting. So I have a great deal of respect for the history and the meaning of what the Emeritus Distinction means, and wonderful, pleasant surprise when I learned of nomination and the approval of that. I'm grateful for the long lifetime support from my wife, Jane, my son, David. I spent 22 years in industry and business prior to teaching as adjunct faculty, and I would never have been able to make that transition from the world of business to academia without the support of my wife and son. As Gary had mentioned, I've been with Maricopa a while, and I'm eternally grateful to Professor Jim Hogan, who was the original founder of the Hospitality and Tourism Program at Scottsdale Community College and my mentor for a long time. I'm grateful to Dr. Dekabooter for his many years of service at Scottsdale and continuous support for the development of the Hospitality and Tourism Program. I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunities that I've had to impact the lives of our students and to work with such a team of professionals. I was involved in a number of different grant programs and others, and I was very proud that wherever I went, reputation of Maricopa was something that wowed everyone. You know, once they found out I was there representing Maricopa, it was fabulous. So my congratulations to all of those before and since. It's a well-deserved and hard-earned reputation. I'm very proud to have been a part of, of the organization. It's a well-deserved and hard-earned reputation. I'm very proud to have been a part of, of the organization. I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunities I've had to make a difference in the lives of so many of our students. As an occupational program, we have the unique opportunity to be with our students for two years, four years, six years, even 10 years to complete those associate's degrees and then move on through the partnerships that we've developed with the universities. And it's something that I'm always going to cherish. I'm indebted to our colleagues for the support, the mentorship, the camaraderie that I have enjoyed throughout my time with, with Maricopa. In closing, I want to extend the deepest gratitude. More than 20 years ago, they both let me talk them into joining our faculty from the industry as adjunct faculty. And now they have both reached and surpassed 20 years after negotiating the gauntlet from adjunct faculty to RFP faculty with 20 years of service with that. And they've continued to build, continue to expand and maintain a high degree of a strong reputation within the valley, within the industry and within higher education. It's been the honor of my life to serve Maricopa. I deeply appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Hey. Ms. Sullivan. I've had the opportunity to eat at the cafe. And you have built a tremendous program with your colleagues and the food is really yummy. And I really liked the desserts. So I always appreciate the invitation, but thank you for what you've done for so many students and our community. Welcome.
So much, Larry, and we'll continue now with our second recipient this evening. I'd like to invite Rachel Bray Steele to come forward. She is the Chair of our Department of Art and Music. Rachel.
President Bitter Smith, esteemed members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez and distinguished guests. It's my honor to stand before you tonight to acknowledge the exceptional career gathered here to celebrate his dedication, his passion for teaching and to express our deepest gratitude for the countless lives he's transformed throughout his career. Roger McKinney is more than a teacher. He's an inspiration to students fortunate enough to enter his classroom. His commitment to nurturing, creating a nurturing and supportive environment that have empowered countless individuals to realize their full potential in the arts. Roger's contribute, contributions extend beyond the classroom. And he was instrumental in various projects and initiatives, including his role in the Student Behavior Committee, Indigenous Scholars Institute, Indigenous Cultural Center for Strategic Planning Committee. His efforts in bringing ResArt to our campus fostered cultural awareness and appreciation. His paintings grace our halls and the walls of our schools. Additionally, he has taught and supported hoop and junior ACE as well as open house events. His dedication to community and engagement is exemplary. From spearheading outreach programs to co-founding the impactful Study Abroad Program Connecting Communities and Sharing Culture, which immersed our students in Aboriginal communities in Australia, staying on marais with the Maori people of New Zealand. His commitment to giving back to society and inspiring others is a testament to his character and leadership. Throughout his tenure, his innovative approach enriched the lives of students and left an indelible mark at SCC. Salt River Pima, Maricopa, Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community upon his land SCC is located. And numerous other Arizona Native communities. As we reflect on Roger's career, let us celebrate not only his professional achievements, but also the essence of the man himself. A person of integrity, humility, compassion, and a cherished member of our academic community. He has been missed as he's been away for years and we wish him well in this next chapter of his life.
President Bitter Smith, Chair, Board, Dr. Gonzalez, all of our guests here this evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me. I told Rachel not to write anything though. But I would like to start out in my own language. Oh, need to not. It's not going to come. Panio, Peekapoo, Kansas. I'd like to say that in my own language, hi to all of you and thank you for being here. I, I just said that I bring my greatest blessings to you. And, and it's been a blessing to serve in, in the school district itself all, all these years. And some of us started at the same time. I started at the same time as Larry, but I was in the American Indian Programs for the first six years of my time at SCC. And eventually in 2002, I think Joe Ortiz was the one who kind of talked me into applying as an adjunct over to the art department in my spare time, which I don't know how I did that. Anyhow, one thing led to another and I ended up in in the art department. And so I was actually wearing two hats at the same time. I actually was the interim director of the American Indian Programs and I had transitioned into the art department while they were seeking a new director of American Indian Programs. So I carried a lot of different responsibilities, but it's definitely been a joy. And sometimes, you know, you don't stop and think about all the lives that you've impacted, you know, but if you actually stop and count how the number of students that you have in every class over the course of the years, that's a lot of students. That's a lot of people that you impact. And it's been a real blessing. Sometimes it's difficult to know when you're a faculty person, how you're impacting people around you. But every now and then you hear something good from someone, somewhere. Most of the time I always talk about it, hearing about it through the Moxie, Moccas and Telegraph kind of a thing. And sometimes it would be from people in the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, which I'm very thankful for them to have a place to go for my job every day to have SCC on their land. It's a very special place. And that's also special occasionally when you still run into students, former students, even though you might be retired or you've been out in other places and you walk into some place and next thing I know I hear, hey, you, you, aren't you that professor from Scottsdale Community College? I turn around like, oh yeah, I am. And, and and to have someone come up and tell you about their experience in one of your classes. And I think, oh my gosh, that student was actually listening. And that student actually learned something. So sometimes when you're thinking things all end up here, you're actually having a very positive impact. And it's really a wonderful experience. I have to do, also say that one of my highlights, as Rachel was sharing, when we were doing Study Broad, we end up having the that will, we were actually, actually recognized as the best international study abroad program for a community college in the world. And I had the privilege to go and speak at the United Nations about our program. And that says a lot about the SCC campus. It says a lot about our study abroad programs in the American, but community college system. And I would encourage you to continue to do that for any faculty who have that interest because it changes student lives in so many wonderful ways. So I also want to acknowledge my wife Debbie, who's here, 45 years, and she's been up with me and all this time. She's also in, was a kindergarten teacher. The same, she went into kindergarten teaching at the same time I went to teach college. And so sometimes I would tease and say, hey, she's got the little kids. I got the big kids. But it was all a wonderful experience. Both of my sons attended the Maricopa Community Colleges. My youngest son, Jordan, is a graduate from SCC. So Maricopa Community College has had, has had a big impact on our family and I've just been very grateful for the experience and thank you for your time and, and for this honor. I say bye now.
Thank you, Dr. Loschinsky, for helping those presentations set up. And I would just, as a Scottsdale resident, I would tell you that the results of both gentlemen's work are very present in the city. So congratulations. We thank you for the, the resorts and the arts and the culture that still exist and within the boundaries of the city that have been spurred by SCC, by you. With that, we will now move on to Dr. Gonzalez. And I don't know how you're going to follow that, but you're pretty good. So I think it's time for your report.
I'm going to try, Mrs. Bitter Smith. Thank you. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, members of CEC faculty, staff and guests that are with us this evening. For my chancellor's update, I'm going to give you some information that's specific to Gateway. You got to hear their presentation from the students earlier. One of the highlights is that Gateway's enrollment is up by 5.4% and basic FTSE is up by 5% over this time last year. The Gateway Early College High School continues to see incremental enrollment growth as space permits increase in this year from 321 to 337 students. In addition to 180 enrollments in dual enrollment courses, the high school also has 58 students enrolled in three sections of the first year experience course titled FYE 103. Services that Gateway offers to the community are also seeing positive results. In 2023, Venture Cafe hosted 49 Thursday gatherings with an average of 150 in-person attendees weekly at CEI Lab Force. Phoenix Forge membership has grown from 906 in January 2023 to 1,408 today. And the HUG Clinic had 12,900, excuse me, 1,290 patient visits, an increase of 23% over 2022 due to new grant funding and expanding partnerships. Gateway was selected by the City of Phoenix as the 2030 Electrification Plan Training Center. The college will provide training in the areas of EV technicians and charging station installation and maintenance to support the 230,000 charging stations in the City of Phoenix by 2030. Gateway is partnering with Legacy EV to work on curriculum, shared equipment and co-branding with future plans of a new public-private partnership for a training facility. Additionally, I'm pleased to announce that Gateway was named one of the top 150 colleges competing for the Aspen Prize for 2025. After completing the application, Gateway was granted an interview to continue the process to compete for a semifinalist ranking. They should hear more by the end of April. So go Geckos in that regard. And in case you don't know, the, the winner of the Aspen Prize also receives a million dollar award with that. So we're I think Kim would love to hear that we've got an additional million dollars on plan for. I'll move on to chancellor's goal update, specifically goal six, excuse me, goal six, which is fiscal stability and resource expansion, direct systemic structural change that sustains Maricopa financial stability and establishes long-term revenue generating endeavors to ensure the financial health of the enterprise. We continue to make progress towards this chancellor's goal, specifically goal 6C, which is new public-private partnership for housing on campus. An RFP was issued to identify a master real estate broker to work with Maricopa in this space. Successful respondent was identified and we are currently in contract negotiations. It is anticipated that the contract will move forward to the governing board next month. Additionally, the enterprise model team met with the multifamily-focused real estate investment firm that is interested in developing long-term land lease, multifamily and mixed-use developments on Maricopa real estate assets. Maricopa will have the opportunity to work with these housing development companies in the coming months via the master real estate broker that will be the main partner with Maricopa as we move forward. Enrollment update for the system compared to this time last year, headcount is up 3.9% from the spring of 2023. And FTSE is up 4.8% from spring 2023. For legislative update, I was honored to be Congressman Greg Stanton's guest for the State of the Union address on, on March 7th. President Biden specifically noted community colleges provided some of the best rear training in America. In addition to being a pathway to a bachelor's degree, Maricopa continues to be a national leader in these spaces. It was a privilege to connect with Arizona's federal delegation, which remains aligned on these issues. And at the state Capitol, we are meeting with key members to garner support for the community college promise scholarship proposal. Community college districts across the state have coalesced around this proposal and AC4 is in support. A few days ago, I was invited to buy intel to attend an event on its Arca Teo campus where President Biden is expected to be and make some announcements. So please stay tuned. Looking forward to finally getting an opportunity to meet the US president. And believe this or not, I have a dad joke. Yeah. I am, people often ask me what I'm reading. I don't know why they're interested in that, but I, I'm reading an anti-gravity book and I just cannot put it down.
There you go.
It's moving across the room. I see it. I got another one. I ordered a chicken and an egg online. I'll let you know which one comes first. And my last one is this. Some of you just get that? All right, here's my last one. I have two dogs. I named one Timex and the other one Rolex. I now have watchdogs. President Bitter Smith, that concludes my dad jokes. The chancellor's report.
And on that note, I will ask the board if they have any questions. Please, please no rebuttal dad jokes. Would not. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And, and the data information was really useful. We appreciate that very much. Great news for, as we move in enrollment numbers and, and partnerships. It's time for us to move to citizen, citizens interim. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda. Senate concerns to the board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect and civil or disorderly conduct is not permitted. The, an individual may serve as cause for the board's presence to direct that. The speaker can put his his remarks. If insulting language or directed remarks might be defamatory. Don't believe that's going to happen this evening. But I do have one person who would like to speak and I would ask Candace Mickelson to join us. Candace, you have three minutes under our provisions. Welcome.
Good evening, President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. I stated my name is Candace Mickelson. I'm a retired residential service faculty member and a current adjunct service faculty member. As service faculty adjuncts, we find ourselves in a difficult and demoralizing position from actions taken without our consent or communication with us in the last academic year. Those actions instituted a wage disparity between new hires and continuing employees where newly hired service adjuncts receive 37% less remuneration for the same work. This pay exception was codified in the 2023-24 RFA 10.2.2 and is set to expire on June 30, 2024, with pay rates to be addressed, possibly aligning all service faculty adjunct wages through language written in the adjunct faculty materials. While it is anticipated that a compensation advisory committee proposal will soon be put forward to the governing board based on recommendations made by the adjunct faculty group leadership, I am here to state that any said proposals do not reflect inter-space negotiation with those of us affected. I would say in my opinion, primarily because the space wasn't available for meaningful discussions. It is very, very important to note that the adjunct faculty group was placed in an untenable position of having to navigate inconsistencies created by changes to the 2023-24 RFA while considering their obligations to service faculty adjuncts, thereby compromising AFG's abilities thereby compromising AFG's ability to fully represent our needs. No employee should be singled out for adverse policies or procedures, including substantial wage reduction of thirty seven percent or a proposed reduction of twenty percent, or the threat of a wage freeze, or the exclusion from COLAS and professional growth opportunities, especially when said actions are the result of language changes in an agreement governing another employee group. March is Women's History Month, as most of you know, and I am the face of this group of over eighty percent women. As those who hold the final fiduciary responsibility, we are requesting the governing board's assistance in facilitating the following: face-to-face, interest-based discussions, which are meaningful and broad-based, with appropriate representation selected by the employee group affected, a spirit of partnership between the affected employee group, district representatives, and the board in order to reach a reasonable and policy-aligned resolution that avoids the appearance of discrimination, while also affirming and upholding the district's commitment to fair and just compensation practices. And lastly, to avoid decisions in urgency, we ask the board to ensure there is no wage reduction on July first and to restore the prior service adjunct wage until proper negotiation can take place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Michelson. Hey, let, let us move on to the consent agenda. And we reviewed that in Agenda Review. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member or the chancellor would like to remove? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sullivan, seconded by Dr. Narini. Seeing no conversation. All those that are in favor, please think about by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries and it's unanimous. With that, then we'll move on to section G, which is the non-consent action items. And this is the approval of a resolution of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board ordering and calling an election to be held on November the fifth of 2024 to submit a question to district voters concerning the permanent adjustment to the fiscal year nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty basic expenditure limit, providing for the conduct of an election. Dr. Gonzalez, we've had a lot of conversation about all of this, but I would turn to you for any comments.
Thank you, President Bitter Smith, members of the board. In April of 2023, the governing board directed me to present the board a resolution to refer to the voters at the November 2024 general election. What you have before you today is a proposal to permanently adjust the base limit that would be used to calculate the district's expenditure limitation, taking into consideration the appropriate economic factors and enabling the district to most effectively use available resources to support its students and the communities it serves. Staff is available for any additional comments or questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board ordering and calling an election to be held on November fifth, 2024 to submit a question to district voters concerning a permanent adjustment to the fiscal year nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty base expenditure limit, providing for the conduct of an election?
Ms. Bitter Smith?
Ms. Sullivan?
I would move approval of the statement you just read, approving the resolution to move this forward.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward to call the election pursuant to the resolution. It's part of the agenda. Any discussion? If not, I will ask for all those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. The student advisory vote is not here, but the resolution of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board ordering and calling an election to be held on November fifth, 2024 to submit a question to district voters concerning the adjustment to the fiscal year nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty base expenditure limit is approved unanimously by this board. Thank you, board, for the work that you've done. Thank you to the team, the district that has worked with us. We now move forward to a lot of work between now and November fifth. Congratulations. We do have, let's say, move along here. First read of information items, first read of the 2024-2025 Residential Faculty Agreement to be effective July first, 2024. Second item is the employment separations, December second, 2023 through January nineteenth, 2024. Report, board members, are there any questions on this first read items? Seeing none, let's go to the monitoring reports. The budget analysis report, Fund One, general unrestricted fund for the eight months ending February twenty nine, 2024. Our Ms. Granio is hoping we don't have questions, but I have to ask, are there any questions? If not, then we'll move on to our community linkage reports. And I will turn and start with Ms. Davis.
Thank you, President Bitter Smith. On the fourth of March, I tried and kind of successfully attended the Mesa Community College Promise Announcement. I was a little late because I went to the wrong place. So I wandered around the campus for a long time and saw a lot of the campus, but the event was wonderful and I accomplished all my goals because I wanted to meet the mayor of Mesa. And I didn't know that my paid position boss was going to be there. So that was kind of nice, too. So I'm a big Promise fan, so I'm glad I got to go, even if I was late. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, which really wasn't even part of our agenda, but my husband and I attended the Phoenix Chorus Mozart Requiem Concert at a church last, like, March eighth or something like that. It was a wonderful, wonderful concert. And I'm glad that we got an opportunity to go. And listening to those wonderful people sing was just amazing. We're doing some great stuff. And I'm so glad that we had the opportunity to do that. So thank you, Dr. Britt.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Sullivan?
Oh, my. I had the pleasure of attending with many of my colleagues on the board, the All Academic American Team blah, blah, blah luncheon. I can't remember all the words. And that was very inspiring, both to meet the recipients of the recognition and to see them honored in such a phenomenal way. It's very heartwarming to know that they're in line for some spectacular futures based on their experience with our district and moving forward. So I appreciated the honor to be there with many of you, I might add. Also, the work I've done this past month has been in affiliation, not that that's significant to you, but to me in terms of time, with the Association of Governing Boards of universities and colleges. And I learn more and more every day about how we are as much a leader in the higher education space as any university and any college. And I always have the opportunity to brag about our district. And when there's a problem, I get to say how we're solving it. So, you know, it's very intentional, I believe, on their part to be and to embrace community colleges. And in that regard, I think we will be making a difference and have an impact on what also is going on in that higher education space where perhaps community colleges have been isolated or less ignored. So I, I look at that as both an honor and a privilege, but mostly as an opportunity to represent all of you and the fine work that we're doing. And with that, I'll be attending with the colleagues here and Dr. Gonzalez, the AGV Conference in Boston beginning next Monday. I hear the weather is cold. So to go from eighty degrees to thirty five may be a challenge. I think the opportunity for learning and bringing back some more knowledge and opportunity to engage with others in the higher education space will be a real opportunity and benefit. So I appreciate that. And that's what I have for now.
And I should add, congratulations to you on being appointed to the AGV Board of Directors.
Oh, thank you.
It's the first time anyone from Maricopa has been on that board, certainly. Ms. Smith?
No report for me this month. Thank you.
Let's move on. Ms. Butler?
Thank you, President Bitter Smith. I attended the Maricopa Foundation Board Meeting. Spit that out, sorry. And I want to make sure on everyone's radar is our Annual Day of Giving coming up. It's our Be a Student's Hero Annual Day of Giving. The annual day is May third, 2024. And this, the dollars that are raised are going to go directly to benefit our students through all kinds of direct supports, educational supplies, transportation, food, rent, things that will help them be successful. So the good news is you don't have to wait for the annual day of giving to give. And the website is up live now. You can go online and donate to support our students and make sure that they're successful. You can do that at the foundation website. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
I also attended the All Arizona Academic Team Luncheon, which is a wonderful event every year. And I was excited to know that one of the Maris, Maricopa academic team members intends to stay with us and complete a bachelor's degree. And given the fact that the three public universities make waivers available to the Arizona Academic Team members, I hope that the Maricopa Community Colleges would also consider giving waivers to team members who choose to stay with us and complete their bachelor's degrees. And then I want to comment on the fact that the Women's Leadership Group is coming back after hiatus and that the, what's called a kickoff, the kickoff event will take place in this room on March the twenty ninth. And I'm delighted to join Dr. Hernandez and Dr. Armour as a panelist for the afternoon in which we're going to be talking about our leadership journey. For those of you who are not familiar with the Women's Leadership Group, which was founded under the leadership of former and late governing board member Linda Rosenthal. Each year, the Women's Leadership Group gave a Woman of Distinction Award. And this year, the award will go to our departed colleague, Darcy Renfro. And I think that's a very appropriate way to bring that award back. And I also want to thank Kate Smith for being the executive sponsor in the restoration of the Women's Leadership Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Dr. Narini?
I got to attend the mariachi de noche. I put on by the stage. Only sorry to see that also the vaay wasn't there to represent PC and their mariachi music. I also attended the All Arizona Academic Team where we met Katrina Salas, who is going to go on to ASU, I believe, after, after she finishes with us. On March second, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Stars Gala, recognizing some of the outstanding leaders of our, young leaders of our, of our community. And next week I'll be going to AGB in Boston with some of the other board members. Who's my report?
Thank you, Dr. Narini. I will just add on that I participated in the ACCT Public Policy Committee, which I serve as a Maricopa member, which ties into some federal legislation that is of importance to us, primarily focusing on the expansion of the ability to use 529 funds for scholarships. Now, that's timely because when I got back off that call, I had a letter from the state treasurer, Kimberly, the appointing me to the 529 Advisory Committee, which will focus on those issues. And part of their goal is to continue to communicate to federal policymakers about the utilization and increased opportunities for 529 funds. Not only, obviously we use those here and in four-year institutions, but for certification, accreditation, some of our certificate programs here that do not qualify for 529 funds. I know some of the room are very familiar with that process, but this gives us at least an opportunity to continue that battle in a formal capacity. And like many others, we will all be freezing in Boston at AGB, but inside the hotel, going to conferences that I think look extremely valuable.
Before you, you close this out, I have another update. On what day, I can't remember exactly, Ms. Bitter Smith became a grandmother. And so we want to acknowledge that.
That is true. Thank you.
There has been competition among this board about grandparents and their grandchildren, to which I could not, which I could not participate in. Yes, it was, yes, there were several of us that were not players. But thankfully, that opportunity finally happened. And I'm delighted to tell you I have the most adorable, cute grandson that ever existed. As anybody else on the table would tell you, their grandchildren are not at Sam's. Okay, then we're not, that's not a competition, but.
And President Bitter Smith, I would like to point out that that 529 plan will come in very handy.
And by no coincidence, that account's already been opened. So there you go. Okay, moving on, and thank you, Ms. Sullivan. None of you will get pictures. Well, some of you have gotten pictures emailed already, sorry. But I will not inundate you with pictures. Our next meeting is April ninth with the Agenda Review. We'll be home virtually at four thirty PM. And then April twenty third will be our regular board meeting here at six thirty. I have no other announcements to make. So unless there are further comments or announcements, meeting stands adjourned. Thank you so much.